Welcome, everyone, to the May 17, 2021, meeting of the City of Santa Barbara City Council Sustainability Committee. And let me find my agenda. Do we have a public comment for items not on the agenda, but within our jurisdiction? Councilmember Sneddon, I think you'd like to introduce someone to us. This is a perfect time.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to introduce my intern, Carrie Millard. And she's joining us for the sustainability meeting. She lives in District 4, but she's also really interested in public engagement and all things environmental and is looking forward to learning from the Sustainability Committee and being a part of things. So Carrie, if you wanted to turn your camera on, you could say hello, or I just wanted to introduce her and let people know that she's here. Thank you.
Yes. Hello. Nice to virtually meet everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Millard, for your interest. We look forward to having you with us. Thank you. Any other public comment in the go-to webinar audience, Mr. Moen?
At this time, there is not. I do want to remind everybody who is attending, if you click on the hand icon, that way I'll know that you want to speak, at which point, when it is time for a public comment, I will unmute you, say your name, and then you'll be able to speak. And at this time, there is still nobody with their hand raised, so I think we can move on.
We'll close open public comment, but of course, we'll take public comment for both items that are on the agenda. And we are ready for number two. Mr. Moen, if you would read that into the record, please.
Roll call, Madam Mayor.
Oh.
I'll do a quick roll call, and then I'll go ahead and read the next item of the agenda. We have Mayor Marilla.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Harmon.
Here.
Councilmember Sneddon.
Here.
Thank you.
Very good.
And the second item of the agenda is electric vehicle infrastructure progress and planning update.
We're ready for staff presentation. Ms. Parento, good to see you. And take it away.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good to see you as well. And yes, we're here to talk to you today about some electric vehicle planning efforts that we're doing. As you know, electric vehicles present a tremendous opportunity as we work on council's climate goals. Next up, the next slide, please. So first and foremost, as you surely recall, you, your council did adopt a carbon neutrality goal by 2035. And in order to make progress towards that goal, we need to understand where our emissions are coming from. You've seen this this chart before, but about 60% of our local emissions in Santa Barbara do come from transportation sources, and the majority of those from single occupancy vehicles. And so it does provide an opportunity for us to address that through a number of pathways. So what we're looking at in the Energy and Climate Division and throughout the city is to encourage, you know, first encourage choices other than a single occupancy vehicle, whether through active transportation or mass transit, things like that. And then another pathway would be through electrification of vehicles. Next slide, please. So electric vehicles are important to this strategy because some car trips are just unavoidable. As we all know, a substantial amount of our local workforce commutes in from far away. Cars are convenient. We all have things that we need to get to throughout our day. And so it's unrealistic to think that we'll completely eliminate light-duty vehicles. And so we have an opportunity to capitalize on some of our other investments that we're making locally, specifically into Santa Barbara Clean Energy and the carbon-free electricity that it's going to provide for the community to really make a solid impact on our transportation, excuse me, transportation-related emissions by encouraging the adoption of electric vehicles. Next slide, please. So just to give you a snapshot of how electric vehicles are taking over the market, if you will, they are rapidly increasing. This chart shows specific data for Santa Barbara County. So over the last few years, you can see sort of a tremendous spike. There's a bit of an anomaly in 2018, but otherwise, it is a, it is an increase year over year of electric vehicle sales, which really, you know, supports the the strategy that we're pursuing of encouraging vehicle adoption. In addition to that, the governor has signed Executive Order N 7920, which is proposing to ban the sale of gas vehicles in California by 2035. And so we will continue to see a push toward electric vehicle infrastructure and sales throughout our state. On top of that, as part of Governor Newsom's California Comeback Plan that was just released, California's plan to invest $3.2 billion statewide on EV infrastructure with a particular focus on heavy and medium-duty vehicles, which has really been a tough nut to crack with electric vehicle infrastructure. And so this is a really promising development for us as we look to expand our infrastructure here locally. Next slide, please. There are also some technology changes that are really facilitating this transition. The range is expanding. For almost all of the vehicle manufacturers, they have substantial advancements in their range. If you recall, just a few short years ago, the range was about 75 miles, if you were lucky. And so it created what's called range anxiety, and people weren't quick to adopt electric vehicles because they weren't sure that they would get from point A to point B dependably. But now you can see with this chart, we're having range ranges up to 400 miles with some of the Teslas, and that creates a whole new sense of security if you're adopting an electric vehicle. Additionally, battery prices are coming down, which is partly why we're seeing this increase in range, but also really significantly impact the affordability of electric vehicles for the better, making it easier to adopt. Another very promising development that's coming down the pike is about 100 new models of electric vehicles are set to debut by 2024. Every major car manufacturer has announced a suite of electric vehicles with some promising to offer all of their vehicles in an electric model imminently. And so this is really, really underscores that this is, you know, the future, and we need to be prepared for it. Next slide, please. So really quickly, just to provide a little primer on charging, there are sort of four types of chargers available. One that comes with every electric vehicle is what's called a Level 1 charger, and it's a plug that literally plugs into your standard home outlet, so your 120-volt outlet. It takes approximately 20 hours to charge a battery for 120-mile range. So not, not great for, you know, commuting around downtown, but if you're going to be home, you know, overnight, you could probably get a decent charge there. Then there's Level 2, which is what the city is most familiar with installing to date. These are, you know, a little bit faster, or maybe double the speed of the Level 1s, and you're getting about 180 miles in eight hours. The nice thing about the Level 2 is they have a universal plug. So really, any charger can fit any car for the Level 2. So Teslas do need an adapter, but they come with that adapter. So any Level 2 can charge any electric vehicle, and that's a really nice thing. Level 3, otherwise known as direct-current fast charging, or a fast charger, can substantially decrease the charging time, so 50 to 90 miles in 30 minutes, multiply that for longer ranges. The problem with Level 3s is that there are three different plug types. So different car manufacturers standardize on different plug types. And so we're going to have to investigate that a little bit, making sure we're accommodating at least the majority of our local drivers. And then the fourth type is the Tesla Supercharger, which is slightly different than the Level 3 and actually charges even faster. So about 200 or more miles in 30 minutes. And this is proprietary, meaning those chargers can only charge Tesla vehicles. Next slide, please. So now that we've given you that primer, I wanted to talk to you about what we've done so far and where we're going here in Santa Barbara. Next slide. So we've been working on electric vehicle infrastructure since about 2014. We were pretty early to the game. There was a slew of federal funding that came out called the CULOM Grant that really funded stations throughout the country. And we were able to leverage some of that funding to get eight stations. And when I say stations, I mean ports, so accommodate eight vehicles throughout the city. And those were 100% grant-funded, and those were our first four stations, or first eight stations that we had. In 2017, we expanded upon that a little bit as we saw usage ramp up and the demand for stations increase. Those were partially grant-funded through the APCD's Carl Meyer Grants. And so we were, we've been pretty successful leveraging outside funding for these. And in 2020, we did a big project on the roof of the Granada Garage where we leveraged Southern California Edison's Charge Ready Program, which paid for all of the infrastructure upgrades. And then the APCDs, or sorry, the Air Pollution Control District's Carl Meyer Grants. And so that was almost 100% funded as well. Next slide, please. We've also done some work in the city fleet where we're transitioning to electric vehicles. Fleet's been very proactive at looking for environmentally friendly ways to transition our fleet vehicles. They currently have 17 electric vehicles in the fleet, which is about 18% of all of the city's light-duty vehicles. When I say light-duty, this does not include backer trucks or heavier fleet vehicles that you would imagine. It's more like small pickup trucks and then sedans and coupe cars. They do have in their planning effort a goal to transition 63 more cars, a few each year, by FY '25. So that is in their planning documents, and we will help support them in that. And in order to accommodate this transition, they did install 14 more charging ports at the corporate yard parking lot with a need for more as we expand the program, but that was a really good first start. We did leverage Southern California Edison funds for that as well, and that was, the infrastructure was completely paid for by the Charge Ready Program. There are some operational hurdles as we address the city fleet that we're trying to address. One is fast charging. So going back to those fast chargers, Level 3, that we talked about, they charge vehicles much, much more quickly, but they come at a tremendous energy expense. And so any of our city-owned properties don't actually have enough electrical service to to supply power to these fast chargers. So we have to sort of plan out and work out how to fund these very expensive service upgrades. Next is we have a robust commuter program at the city for employees of the city where commuters are allowed to take a city vehicle home as a, as part of the carpool program. And so it's figuring out the nuances of how do those cars then come back into fleet service charged. So there's a couple of ways to handle that that we're working through with fleet, but, you know, they're having to think through that a little bit. And then lastly is how the vehicles are used. So for example, the police cruisers would be a great set of vehicles to transition to electric. But because of how the police cruisers operate, especially they have a huge onboard electrical load and do a lot of idling, it's hard to keep them charged enough to be out in the field and deployed. Additionally, those vehicles come back to the station and then are taken out again by the next set of officers as they go around their beats. So there's a couple of things that we're working through and trying to figure out how we might use electric vehicles to continue to provide the services to the community that we, that we need to provide. Next slide, please. So this is just a map. I apologize if the icons are very small, but it's a map of the 50-owned ports that the city owns at, located at multiple parking garages. So we've got 34 at the Granada Garage, located on Ana Capa and Ana Pumu, two at the library garage one block down, three at the Helena Avenue parking lot, and then a few more located lower down, including at the waterfront. Next slide, please. And then this is a map of public chargers. So beyond what the city offers, there are hotels and other businesses that offer some public charging where people can subscribe to various charging networks and and charge their vehicles there. Next slide, please. So based on that previous map, there's, there's a few areas of opportunity, but in particular, two areas that I personally see big blank spots of where we should have some charging. And those are on the upper state area, you know, near the Mission, Samar Can, San Roque, where we have a lot of retail activity and no, not very much EV charging infrastructure. And then the other area is certainly the east side and lower east side, like off of Milpiss. And those commercial areas, there's very little charging infrastructure. And so we would want to focus on those in upcoming time periods. Next slide, please. So some of our challenges, I just mentioned, electrical capacity, that is probably the biggest challenge that we face in the service. So actually, Edison's ability to accommodate electrical capacity beyond even improving infrastructure is limited. Their actual circuits that distribute energy around the city cannot infinitely add on capacity. And so that's something that we have to weigh. And then the cost of bringing the service or the meter to the facility and having the charging capacity is another challenge. And then the cost of installing all of the chargers is another challenge. Then access, like how do we get people to the stations and and weigh demand appropriately? And then security. So as we look to distribute stations throughout our city, are there places where people would or would not feel safe leaving their car for extended periods of time to charge? So we're sort of taking a look at that. Next slide, please. And then there's behavioral or adoption challenges that are separate from the infrastructure challenges that we are trying to address also. So the range anxiety that I mentioned earlier, how do people know that they can take that road trip with their family or get to their meeting without running out of battery? The time it takes to charge is a bit of a hurdle, right? With all of the different types of charging infrastructure out there, how do we get people on their way reliably? Vehicle selection and choice has up to now been maybe a hurdle where people can't get the vehicle type that they like in an electric option, but as we saw before, that is changing rapidly. Vehicle costs can be a hurdle. It can sometimes cost quite a bit more to get an electric vehicle. And then vehicle needs, as I mentioned before, we're doing pretty well on the light-duty vehicle side. But medium and heavy-duty vehicles, there's not a great electric option yet. There's a lot of research and investment going into it, but we're still waiting for that really reliable set of medium and heavy-duty vehicles. So buses, heavy trucks, garbage trucks, things like that. Next slide, please. But we have some opportunities. We're really fortunate as a city that we have sites dappled across our service area. And so we can really take a look at where our citizens might need this kind of infrastructure and resource. We can also embark on public-private partnerships. We're currently looking at, you know, businesses where they might want to install EV infrastructure and how we might help support that project. We're looking near multifamily residential. How can we help those renters and tenants have access to EV infrastructure? Another interesting thing that some cities are looking at, and we're just starting to look at, is curbside EV charging. And so putting chargers right along the road, as you see in this picture, and allowing people to park for an hour or whatever aligns with our parking restrictions on the, on the street and charge their vehicle. And so we're sort of taking, we're taking a wait-and-see approach on that one and seeing how other cities are doing that. It's pretty nuanced. And then how can we get people to get charging in their home? We have had some success this year with on-demand permitting for solar and solar and storage projects, and we would really like to extend that for in-home electric vehicle charging infrastructure. So we're working on some ways to smooth the pathway there. Next slide, please. There are also some levers that we can pull as a city to encourage vehicle adoption, and one is assuring availability of charging. So we are, we are actively working on that, as you saw, to make sure that we have enough EV charging throughout our city and making sure people know that they are working and available. Also, allowing for dynamic pricing is an opportunity, not only for the electric vehicle owner, but also for us as a city to control or encourage people to charge when it makes sense for electric, our electric grid or Santa Barbara Clean Energy's load forecast, and try to get them off of those peak hours of 4:00 to 9:00 PM. We're also doing things to eliminate the shuffle, if you will. So up until last year, all of our public EV chargers were required to be only in, you know, actively charging. So you could park there if you were actively charging, then you had to move your vehicle. Well, that creates hurdles and barriers for folks that are commuting, say, from Long Poak in their electric vehicle to work and want to park for the day and don't want to have to come keep moving their vehicle. So we're piloting a workforce electric vehicle permit program on the top floor of the Granada, where not only is it a discounted permit rate if you are wanting to park your EV there, but you also don't have to move your vehicle after an hour or three hours, whenever your vehicle is done charging, because we have ample infrastructure up there. And that's a really nice thing. I've actually heard back from people that that is a really nice step forward because then they don't have to be constantly worrying about moving their car. So we'll keep monitoring that program. And then we can provide benefits, right? That there's an incentive we can provide, whether it's good parking spots or expedited permitting or incentives. So we'll keep looking at the opportunities there to help our constituents transition to electric vehicles. Next slide, please. So really, what's sort of top of mind as part, as we kind of embark on all of this is, is the upcoming Tesla project at the Ortega Garage, otherwise known as Lot 10, where Tesla is proposing to install 12 superchargers. We did negotiate some ancillary benefits with them, where we actually got them to install three Level 2 chargers that they will own and operate. And then also, and this is a big win for the city, they're going to install electrical service to the meter for us to install four Level 3 chargers that are not proprietary to Tesla. So this is a really a big opportunity because, as I mentioned before, installing that service capacity is one of the biggest cost elements to expanding our EV, our electric vehicle infrastructure. So this is a really great opportunity for us. We won't install the Level 3s right away, but it is a future project. And we have some funding coming down the pike that might help us get there. As you can see, too, the Tesla chargers are still a huge benefit to our community because this chart here shows you the propensity of each vehicle. And you can see that Tesla is by far the largest piece of market share in Santa Barbara County at about 60% of all EV sales in 2020. Next slide, please. So there's some funding coming down the pike, too, with various sources. So we have the Low Carbon Fuel Standard Credits, which is part of the cap and trade funds that the state has put together. And the nice thing about those is they'll fund actual capital projects. We can get a lot of our capital investment paid for, and then they'll actually fund low capacity. So as people charge, they pay you for the offset vehicle miles traveled. They kind of calculate, all right, if you have this much charging, that means that that electric vehicle was going to drive X amount of miles, and they will credit us for that, those avoided gas vehicle miles traveled. So that's a really big funding opportunity for us. Then Southern California Edison is embarking on their Charge Ready 2 Prop Program, which we are getting ready to take advantage of. That means more Level 2 chargers and hopefully some Level 3 chargers, and they fund the infrastructure itself. So not the charging, the chargers where you plug in, but all of the electrical needs up to the charger. And again, that's a big part of the cost. There's another program coming here locally called Cal EVIP, and that provides funding incentives for local government EV installations as well as residential and commercial EV installations. And so we'll be keeping an eye on that program and trying to take advantage of that. The Air Pollution Control District is offering its Carl Meyer Grants again. And then there's some cost-sharing models out there. Some of the electric vehicle charging infrastructure manufacturers are happy to install the charging infrastructure and then reap revenues, if you will, from people charging there. And so we're trying to figure out all the ways that we can stack these funding opportunities to enhance our electric vehicle charging infrastructure around the city. Next slide, please. So all of this is going to wrap up into our electric vehicle master plan that we're currently getting started on. We, up to now, have taken a very reactive approach to installing electric vehicle charging stations where we've sort of gotten funding and then looked at where it was easiest to do it and done it. But we're getting to the point where we need to be a little bit more thoughtful and strategic about where we're placing these stations. So we'll start with what we've got and look for those gaps, like that one slide I showed with Upper State and the east side. We want to prioritize high-density and disadvantaged areas because actually lots more funding is coming down the pike to help even low-income families or folks buy an electric vehicle. And so we should see more and more throughout all socioeconomic classes. We want to also prioritize multifamily residential because that's where we have a lot of opportunity, right? We have a lot of drivers at those sites, and if we can provide charging infrastructure for them, they're more likely to adopt an EV vehicle. We can look at commuting hubs, where are people parking and then and leaving their car for the day to see what kind of behavioral and infrastructure programs they can put in place there, and also areas of high retail and tourism activities. So part of the plan is to identify where the opportunities are, how we will fund it, and then the critical pathways to getting there, like the permit streamlining. Next slide, please. So our next steps will be this Tesla Supercharger install, which again is just one piece of this very big puzzle and is actually facilitating some really exciting opportunities for the city. Eventually, we'll do our city-owned DCFC or Level 3 charging install. We'll continue to evaluate our workforce charging pilot. We'll come back to you with a draft electric vehicle master plan in the next six months or so and work on electric vehicle permit streamlining and incentives. The incentives will be a particular opportunity for Santa Barbara Clean Energy to undertake once it has program funds. Next slide, please. And with that, I'll open it up for questions.
Thanks for the presentation and exciting stuff. Ms. Sneddon, go ahead with questions.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, it's always so exciting to see the new developments. I just have some just basic questions, I guess. So the Tesla Superchargers, I know you talked about the adapter that comes with the Tesla. But so those can be used for any type of vehicle? Like I can take my Chevy Bolt and plug it into a Tesla charging station, or no?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Sneddon, it's actually the opposite. So the Tesla car comes with a Level 2 adapter, so it can charge at any Level 2. But no, only Tesla vehicles can charge with the Tesla Superchargers.
But these 30, or whatever that number was, of Tesla chargers that are installed, those can only charge Tesla vehicles?
But currently, we have no Tesla chargers in the, are at city facilities. Those are all Level 2 chargers, so anyone can charge them. Tesla is bringing 12 superchargers that can only service Teslas.
But they'll allow us, they'll put in the infrastructure for us to add additional chargers, and we'll make those available for any vehicle, not just for Teslas?
Correct. The limitation with Level 3 is again those plug types. So we'll do our best to accommodate the majority of the manufacturers we're seeing here in Santa Barbara. But correct, they're putting in infrastructure for us to install our own more universal chargers.
Okay, so that's Lot 10. And then the Granada Garage project, is that all Tesla chargers also?
The, the councilmember said, and the Granada Garage project is all Level 2 chargers, so universal. Everything the city owns, except for what's proposed at Ortega, is Level 2.
Okay. And then I know, and you sort of alluded to this, like sometimes there might be an EV Go charger or a ChargePoint charger, or maybe, you know, at the, I say, Nuevo parking lot. I say in Nuevo parking lot, it's some other kind of charger that's free, and maybe it's available, and maybe it isn't. And is there, is there some system that can let me log in one place to find out where is there a charger? I don't care if it's E V Go or ChargePoint or what it is, but I just need a charger. Is there something like that?
Councilmember Sneddon, there is. There's an app called Charge Hub that does allow you to access most, if not all, networks. And surely, as this continues to develop, I think there'll be competition for creating that, you know, availability of information.
Then, I know we've talked about this before, that the ones inside the Granada Garage, I've tried to use those before, too, and on my cell phone, I'm supposed to be logging in, but then I can't get cell service in the garage, because it's, so, and, and, you know, if you have to unlock it, you have to step outside the garage to get service and then run back in and try and unlatch it in time, but I never make it. And I just, is there, I don't know, maybe that's more of a comment or question about, is there consideration for, maybe, like we have been doing placement on top of garages or in outdoor spaces? I'm pretty excited about the curbside charging. Just anything on that?
That is a great piece of feedback, because I actually hadn't heard that yet. So I'm appreciative that you've just shared that. You know, we are looking more and more to roofs, because they're underutilized for the garages anyhow, and there are opportunity for solar installations down the line. And so it's a nice kind of combo to do the E V infrastructure and solar. So hopefully, that won't be an issue moving forward. It, Granada Garage is particularly tough, because it's surrounded by large buildings on all sides, and it's pretty thick construction. Hopefully, we're not seeing that elsewhere.
No, but the roof is probably good. And then just prefer the master plan, which I'm really excited about. Maybe if there's thought, or I don't know, if there's consideration on how incentives could be wrapped into, say, the A U D program, or school districts, or city college, or, or different, you know, those are sort of commuter hubs as well. And if we might have, I'm just trying to think about how there might be incentives with, say, the A U D. You know, we limit parking as an incentive, but maybe then an Lou thing could be putting in a charging station somewhere else, or something along those lines. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Sneddon. That's a great suggestion, and we'll make sure to take note of it and incorporate it in our master planning effort.
Thank you.
Thanks. Questions from Councilmember Herman?
Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thanks. Well, I did want to know if you have a way to track use of the ones that we offer now? Are they always in use? Or what, what can you say about that, Ms. Parento? About the demand?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We can track use, actually. They're all network stations. They are all standardized on the ChargePoint station, so it's one dashboard that we have. And we get a sense of electrical use, when they're used, how they're used, how long they're used for, discrete, you know, users. So is it mostly out of town users? And so that is very helpful information. Some stations are used quite frequently, some are not. For example, we overbuilt on purpose on the roof of the Granada Garage, because we wanted to play around with how people could use the spots and not require them to be actively charging, and also in anticipation of more need down the line. So it really varies, and I think, once we start getting some fast charging in place, we'll see a very different usage pattern, because it'll be more attractive to tourists and people coming in for the day.
Okay. Let's go to public comment. Mr. Moen, anyone in the audience raising their hand to speak their piece?
Yes, we have one person who asked a question. John Campanella, I'm not sure if you're able to speak. I've unmuted you. If you're able to talk, please go ahead. If not, I can go ahead and read your question for you.
Thank you. Yeah, the question was, as far as infrastructure improvements, is it a matter of transformers that can handle the additional load? Or is there more infrastructure beyond that that's needed in order to really achieve the goals for the city? Thank you.
Okay, I just started timing you. That was quick. Okay. Any other, we'll take that question in a moment. Any other public comment, Mr. Moen?
This time, there is no other person with their hand up, or no other questions that have been asked.
Okay, we'll close public comment, and we'll go back to staff to see if there's some response to that question that was posed by a member of the public, Ms. Parento.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And yes, there is a difference. So there's, there are two things we're looking at. One is the electrical capacity of the building itself. So that's related to the transformer that's on site, or a panel, electric panel that provides service to the building. And that generally needs to be upgraded to accommodate charging, especially these fast chargers that have a high draw. And we can do that. There's a cost associated with it, but that's typically possible. The very limiting factor is, is Southern California Edison's capacity to move a certain amount of power on their electric grid. So for example, with the Tesla project at Ortega, the maximum allowable capacity that Edison can accommodate really ever without a grid reliability project is 2,000 amps. Well, 16 fast chargers will take all of that amperage, which is why we asked Tesla to do 12, so we could do four additional. That means that there won't be ability for fat, for expanding fast charging there without a significant distribution system upgrade for Madison.
Thank you so much. So we'll take closing comments from the committee. Thank you very much for the presentation and keeping us and the public apprised of what's going on with electric vehicles and charging. I would thank you, and it, go ahead, Ms. Sneddon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not, I can, I can wait, too. I just, for, for closing comments, if you're with.
Yeah, I, I was just going to note that, that when we talk about carbon emissions, it really comes back to people driving their cars. And, and so it's a good thing that we're talking about this and raising awareness about the need to change how we, how we get ourselves moving around and, and taking care of the planet, to say it pretty simply. But go ahead, Ms. Sneddon, your closing remarks, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think this is really well thought out. I'm glad we're starting to having a master planning. I think I just want to request as part of that, too, that we maybe do some sort of inventory of how many commuters would use electric vehicles if there were charging stations, maybe start to get an idea of that. And maybe figuring out, I'm not even sure what the calculation would be, but, you know, vehicle miles traveled, and we're doing so much to incentivize certain programs in terms of parking, and then in terms of limiting those vehicle miles traveled. But this might change the calculation a little bit, if, if those vehicle miles traveled are electric vehicle miles traveled. So I'm just, I'm not sure exactly what the outcome of that would be, but some sort of analysis of that, how many spaces we want to incentivize. And, and I really, I mean, I feel like I see that we would want to have as many commuter charging stations first in order of limiting the, the actual greenhouse gas emissions. But some sort of analysis of that, as we're moving forward over time, looking at that, and how that might fold into the A U D program, or fold into adaptive reuse, you know, as we're thinking about that, if there may be ways to incentivize, since we're starting at this ground level point of the master planning, if there's some way to incentivize that in, and then also working with school districts, or cottage hospital, or other large users of, of transport vehicle miles traveled, just in thinking about that. It's not really a direction, but just sort of how that all, how that all fits in, since we have the opportunity, and it sounds like there will be funding for, for infrastructure, that we really take advantage of that. And thank you. It's a great presentation.
Thanks.
Madam Mayor? I'm, I'm so sorry. I don't know why. I can't get my camera to work well. So if you don't mind, I'm just gonna make a few brief comments. I just, as, as both of you did, I wanted to express my appreciation. Thank you, Ms. Parento, for this great presentation. I'm really excited to see that we're moving now to a posture of really sort of getting out in front of this and bringing this infrastructure in a very active way to our city. I think we see from the governor, this move to electric vehicles. I mean, it, it's really great to see Santa Barbara engaging in this way and, and looking to be on the forefront what is, of what is definitely going to be a movement for our state, and then, and then hopefully, of course, across the country. So really excited about that. I also just wanted to say briefly that I really appreciate your work to leverage private partnerships to get this done for our city. I mean, I, I, I had a little bit of discomfort initially with the idea of some chargers that only worked with Tesla vehicles. And I, you know, I struggled with that a little bit, but in thinking more about it, I, I really think it's very much to staff's credit that you were able to put together this deal, where you were able to leverage partnerships with private companies to get more for more people for our city. And I, I really appreciate that. I think that's just, it's, it is, it shows real engagement, engagement with the sector. I love to see it. I, I think it's great. I think it's the way of the future. And we need to do more of that in all areas of the city, I think. And so just wanted to express my appreciation for your work and, and putting together that deal. It's unique and effective, and it serves a ton of people. So my appreciation, and thanks very much. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I'll echo both of your excellent comments. I was thinking that S B CAG's Traffic Solutions might have some commuter data that Ms. Sneddon was, was looking for. So with thanks and praise, we'll close this item, Ms. Parento, and move to the next one. Mr. Moen, if you would read that item into the record, we'd be grateful.
The next item, item three, is the County Multi-Jurisdictional Solid Waste Task Group.
Ms. Irelly, welcome to the meeting. Go ahead, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and members of the committee. I'm Renee Irelly, the Acting Sustainability and Resilience Co-Director. And today, I wanted to take a few minutes to present the committee with information on a potential restarting of the county's multi-jurisdictional solid waste task group for elected officials. Next slide, please. So briefly, today, I'll go over the background and the history of the task force, talk about what the proposal might entail, and then some next steps. Next slide, please. So in 2001, the county originally formed the task group to plan for countywide solid waste facilities and programs. The membership included all of the cities in the county, and the county itself, as well as the County Special Districts Association. So each member jurisdiction could appoint up to two elected officials, with a maximum membership of 20 elected officials across the county. By 2004, this group had developed the Countywide Long-Term Solid Waste Management Plan, and included in this plan were bylaws, guiding principles, and organizational structure, and a system planning and approval process. Next slide, please. So as a result of all this planning, a long list of long-term programs and projects were organized within the three waste sheds of the county, including San, Santa Maria, Lompoc, and the Tehiquis Landfills. And while the task group discontinued its meetings in 2011, many of these identified programs and projects were continued. And this includes longstanding recycling programs that were added, and service development across program, and coordination across jurisdictions, expanding services of the transfer stations and landfills, looking at construction demolition debris recycling, for example, and analyzing new facilities and technologies for waste management. Next slide, please. So since 2011, the staff for all jurisdictions continue to meet quarterly, although there's no regional elected official collaboration or guidance. So there's definitely an opportunity for greater oversight and communication and conversation with the task group restarting. There's also numerous opportunities for regional coordination and direction, such as the Resource Center implementation and long-term infrastructure planning. Operations are gearing up right now at Tehiquis, and our agreement with the county is until 2038. And there are definitely opportunities for oversight, increased transparency and communication, and long-term decision-making for service and infrastructure needs for the region. A disaster debris processing and disposal. Where to process and dispose of debris from disasters is a major concern. And a regional review of public property in 2019 did not identify sufficient options. Countywide, we need to explore private-public partnerships, including developing arrangements with private property owners to ensure that we can handle debris in the event of emergency. And as a subsequent to that, how do we make sure that we fund this resource properly? And the third, S B 1383 implementation, this is short-lived climate pollutants or organics. This groundbreaking legislation requires 75% diversion of organic material from landfills in the next four years, along with diverting 20% of otherwise edible food. And while we, as a city, are doing a good job in establishing programs and getting measures into place, collaboration for new services, ordinance development and implementation, and food recovery will be important across the region. So currently, the South County jurisdictions, namely Galita and Carpenterita, Carpenteria, have expressed more interest in restarting this elected officials' task group than our northern county colleagues. And county staff is proposing that re-conveniencing of the task group to be voluntary, which is a good first step, and asking that all jurisdictions commit to the, to participation, or perhaps not restarting the group if we can't have everyone at the table. Next slide, please. So I'm here today to introduce the topic to the committee, and also to gauge the committee's interest in restarting the task group for elected officials, and answer any questions. Thank you.
Questions from our committee? Certainly seems like a good idea to me that we restart the, the regional conversation. Ms. Sneddon, questions?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also think it'd be a really good idea to, to restart this. And the, I just had a word, the, the opportunities for regional coordination, and you have their listed, the Resource Center implementation and long-term infrastructure planning. Does that also, what, what more might that include, I guess? What, what topics in that, I mean, are we at any point questioning continuing that relationship or not, or anything along those lines? And would this be the forum for discussing that, or is that not part of the conversation at this task group level?
Oh, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sneddon, I would say that that's not, this is not exactly the forum where we would have that discussion today. What I'm referring to more generally is that we have entered into a long-term commitment to the Resource Center. We are a major, both funding and material source provider. And so obviously, we have a vested interest in this facility. It also has potential to, to serve other jurisdictions within the county as well, because it is this major, at least 20-year investment in, in a facility. And so I think it's important to be thinking about that, you know, those opportunities and that, that long-term planning, and how it's, and how it's functioning, both to provide those services to other jurisdictions, when we're looking about what materials we are actually collecting and processing or not, and, and, and including those. And, and, and including those long-term times when the Tahiquas landfill does close and we need to look at other final landfill disposition of, of material as well.
Yes, that's what I was trying to ask about. So in, in the event that that happens, this task force, task group would also be part of that conversation of how to move forward, task closure, or?
Yes, Councilmember, Councilmember Sneddon. It absolutely, actually could be. Because at, at the staff level, we're meeting quarterly and we are having those sorts of discussions. So if our elected representatives would also like to be more directly involved in those conversations, having this task group would be a way to, to accommodate that.
And how often will this group meet?
That's still up for determination. Historically, it had been quarterly, which would also mimic what the staff-level group, how well, how often we meet every year? I mean, during the year?
I think those are my questions at this time. Are, are we looking today for participation? Or is this sort of setting it up for future discussion?
It's really still in, Councilmember Sneddon, it's still in the discussion phase. Obviously, it's a, it's a little, a bit of, of chicken and egg because there has been some interest in restarting it, but there's not a formal request to make it happen. And so definitely, we're, across the county, we're trying to gauge each jurisdiction's interest in having the, the task group reconvened.
And very supportive. Thank you.
Any other questions? We, we could check and see if there's public comment.
At this time, there is not any questions from public comment.
Okay, we'll open and close public comment. Ms. Ierly, one thing that I would remark, when SB CAG Board, which I'm on, hired Marjorie Kern, who's the new executive director over there. She came from another council of governments that, that had solid waste in its charge. Currently, the Santa Barbara County Association of Governments is housing, transportation. And we, we did the census this year, too. So I'm just tossing out that idea that certainly SB CAG has everyone at the table, including all five of the county supervisors. Just, if, if, if the regional task group worked well under its, under what was done before, and, and that's really what people are looking toward restarting, I, I support it. But I would, on my own, just make a call myself. I'm saying I'll make a call to Ms. Kern to find out what that would look like at, at the SB CAG level. And then, of course, city and county staff always participate in the processes there. So at the SB CAG, you know, in their bureaucracy. So, but thanks. Yeah, it's only gonna get more, I was gonna say, interesting or challenging as we start to fill up our, our landfill space. And it's gonna be a big deal about what to do, what to do next. So, and then there's just interesting topics. And like the Styrofoam initiative, you know, at, at Marburg. And so there are plastics, a whole other subject. So there, there's really a lot there that we could do, working together. But for now, I think you're hearing that, yeah, we're, we're interested. And I, when I was a news reporter, solid waste was one of my areas of focus. So I myself would be interested. I'm sure Ms. Sneddon is, comes from science. She might be too. And who knows with the rest of the council, if they would want to jump into this arena. And so I guess you're hearing generally, two of us. Ms. Herman, you're willing, if you're willing to pipe in, or we want to hear what you have to say?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Yes, I'm in agreement with you both about the, the need to restart this. I mean, this is a fascinating, maybe that's not the right word. It's incredibly interesting, incredibly important. And I appreciate, Ms. Ierly, you introducing this to me a couple of weeks ago and kind of talking to me about the history. And there's a lot here. And I think it's, it's about time we get this going. So my, my full support on this. Thank you.
If you don't need anything else, Ms. Ierly, well, thank you for all the work that you're doing in your department, not just, not just focusing on solid waste. So much going on over there. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Moen, anything else that we need to cover? Otherwise, I think we've finished our agenda.
We've gone through the agenda and there's nobody else with their hands up. So I think we can close or adjourn the meeting.
Okay. Stay tuned, folks, for our next agenda on these important topics. And for now, meeting adjourned.